Hi, I'm Bob Butler from KCBS Radio and welcome to a forum of candidates running for the seat on the Concord City Council District Two. The district includes the east side of Buchanan Field, Arnold Industrial Way, from Willow Pass Road to Concord Avenue, includes the North Concord Bart Station. Today's forum is sponsored by the Contra Costa County Elections Division, CCTV, and the League of Women Voters of Diablo Valley and West Contra Costa. We're holding the roundtable via Zoom, so there might be some issues, and taping it in the CCTV studio. I also want to mention that the names of many of the candidates have their campaign email addresses, if you'd like to contact them. The candidates for this forum are Hope Johnson, Tristan Piper, Paul Wood, Carlin Obringer, and Harmeesh Kumar. We'll begin the forum by asking questions for each person to answer. Now, while the time is not monitored, please be mindful of the length of your answer, and we want to give all candidates the time to tell the voters their thoughts and platforms. So let's start off. Hope, what are the most critical issues facing the city of Concord?
Well, a couple of them before even the pandemic was the Concord City budget. Even during a relatively normal time period, the current council felt that they needed to try to double the sales tax that was currently in place. So I would like to, because of the pandemic, I believe that we are going to have to make do better with what we have. Even if Measure Q, which is now Measure B, passes, we are going to have somewhat of a shortfall because a lot of the businesses are closed. Some people don't have a lot of money, so they're not buying as much. So I'd like to reallocate some of our budget funds, do some audit of the budget to see if there is a better way to allocate them to cover all the communities. And that would include public safety for all the communities, mental health services for all the communities. This is something I've been advocating for in front of the council for many years. I'm not jumping on a bandwagon here. Then there's also affordable housing. We need to find a way. Concord has had a very poor record in the past four years of getting the housing actually built. Some of it is not the council's fault, but some of it is that we don't have a lot of innovative ideas when the current ones are not working. District Two is also under a lot of development. We have the Concord Naval Weapons Station, which was handled very poorly by a former council and currently not being handled very well by the current council. And I would like to see some improvement. We need a trustworthy developer. We need to have the residents be respected and listened to and not have special interests decide when and where the master developer comes from or who that might be. And I'd like to have District Two have more of a say, the residents. Currently, very few District Two residents are appointed on boards and commissions, and I would change that.
Harmeesh?
Yeah, okay. I'm Dr. Harmeesh Kumar. I'm clinical neuropsychologist. I have been in the city of Concord for 28 years. I do see the need for the budget. We need to look at it. And I was on the Mayor Q Committee when the Mayor Q Committee was initiated. It was to fund the gap to develop some infrastructure, which was quite dilapidated at that time. And all the money which went to the Mayor Q, it was supposed to go for the development of infrastructure, improvement of the infrastructure, which did not go. I served five years on that. And they want to increase the length of the Mayor Q to 10-year, which I was in support of. But whatever they said the money will go to, it never went to that. So being in the mental health and starting a mental health agency here 28 years ago in the city of Concord to serve the underserved, I have been champion for mental health, for homeless, for affordable care. And I have been talking about this. Most of you know I have run multiple times. Why I'm running multiple times? Because we have a saying that you cannot merely duck up the ocean sitting on the edges. You have to jump into the ocean to see how deeper it is. And to see things from outside is different than seeing things from inside. We do need to look at the budget. We need to look at District. District Two has been treated like a stepchild of Concord. Even though we bring the industries there and two bart stations are there in District Two, but the way people, because most of the people are working people, and they don't have the same kind of say as developers have. All our leaders have special numbers for these big donors on their desk. They just need to press the button and talk to the Assemblyman, talk to this mayor, talk to the congressman. But when it comes to real people, they have to just wait and wait and wait. They have been given promises, but nothing substantial has been given to them. So that's why I'm running, and we will bring those issues to the forefront.
Thank you. Tristan?
Yes, I'm actually for fiscal responsibility as well, but I've been a resident of District Two for 31 years, raised our children in our District Two home. They've now returned from college, and they're now raising their children in their District Two homes. And the reason I entered this race is because I believe in economic opportunity, equal economic opportunity for everybody. And I believe that you achieve that by having a great educational opportunities, which District Two has some challenges there. You need to have a safe environment to have your children raised. You need to have a safe environment to have your business. And those things are achieved by well-funded police force. So I am not in favor of defunding the police. So when we look at the budget, I do think it needs to be fiscally responsible. We need to look at how to make things efficiently run. But I think the basis for having things be equal for every citizen of Concord, not just District Two, you have to have a safe environment.
Thank you. Paul?
Hi there. I'm Paul Wood, and I definitely think some of our issues are improving our schools, auditing our city budget. There's some money that's unaccounted for, and also the development of the Naval Weapons Station to create more affordable housing, green space, and to bring more business to Concord.
Thank you. And Carlin?
Thank you. I'd like to thank those who organized this morning's forum. My name is Carlin Obringer, and I am proud to serve the people of District Two as your council member in the Concord City Council. And the COVID-19 pandemic is the biggest issue facing our world, our nation, our county, and the city of Concord. I'm running for reelection to continue to provide leadership through this pandemic and continue my proven track record of problem-solving with and for the community. And until there's a vaccine and the virus is under control, my focus continues to be keeping Concordians housed and fed and doing everything in my power to keep small businesses afloat. And I just want to share with you, as your council member during the pandemic, I have taken the following actions. When it comes to food, provided funding to supplement the Meals on Wheels program to accommodate an additional number of Concord seniors who are sheltering in place due to COVID-19. And I've promoted multiple food distributions throughout the city and District Two on social media for the past six months. When it comes to housing, I'm proud of the fact that my council colleagues and I were some of the first city council members in the entire state to pass a rent increase moratorium and eviction moratorium back in March. We did that even before the governor took action. And my colleagues and I have repeatedly extended this ordinance over the past several months. We've also allocated funding to house 37 unsheltered individuals in Concord hotels, and we work with the county to help them find permanent supportive housing. We've also allocated CARES Act funding to help 45 families and seniors pay rent during this challenging time. And small businesses, they are the lifeblood of our economy. And so I led the effort to create a small business grant program to help businesses impacted by COVID-19. And this program is allocating funding, as I speak, to 130 small businesses, $5,000 grants apiece, and that's going to help them just a little bit try to address some of the COVID-19 related impacts. I've also personally recorded nearly 30 videos highlighting small businesses and restaurants in District Two to remind Concordians to support them. So again, getting us through the pandemic is the number one issue right now, but I acknowledge that much remains to be done in the areas of infrastructure repair, economic revitalization, affordable housing development, and the redevelopment of the former Concord Naval Weapons Station. But the issue related to COVID-19 needs to be addressed first. But I want to be there to help Concord emerge stronger on the other side. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Paul, if you're elected, what's the first thing you're going to do?
The first thing I'm going to do is just help our community reopen through COVID-19. So really be there to help support businesses reopen, get our community back to work and back to school, and really be there to listen. So I want to be the voice of our community, District Two in Concord, and really listen to the community and represent their voice. And the things that are important to them will be important to me.
Thank you. Tristan, so you're elected. You take office, and your first thing you're gonna do?
I would take a hard look at the development on the Naval Weapons Base. District Two has an opportunity to have some influence, not through special interests, but through the citizens of District Two. I also think that we should take a hard look at having the new developer build a new high school. I don't think we need another sports stadium. My children all participated in sports. They even did collegiate sports. We did all the sports here. As I mentioned, we've been here for 31 years. It'd really be nice to have a high-quality high school that also incorporated a new library. It would be great for the citizens of Concord as a whole, but it also would go to what I was speaking about, an economic equalizer. Everyone should have an opportunity. Even if we relocated it to Mount Diablo High School, to the new high school, and have it be part of what the developer made, we could do some redevelopment with the old Mount Diablo High School. It's right next to a fantastic cardiac unit, John Mear Hospital, some mixed use, some affordable housing. But I think we should focus on what is best for the citizens of Concord. If we don't step up and do something, it will be handled more by Sacramento, and we won't have as much influence. So that's where I would want to put my focus.
Harmeesh, Ms. Obringer mentioned the fact that small businesses are hurting because of the pandemic. How many of these businesses do you think are not going to be able to reopen when we finally get back to, quote, "normal"?
Yeah, I think small businesses are, they're quite a few. I cannot give you the specific number, but small business owners, the mom-and-pop stores, they are very much hurting right now because of this COVID-19. Our city, Front City Council member is talking about that she's giving $5,000 grants to each. And most of the mom-and-pop stores, most of the hair salon, most of the dry cleaners, most of the restaurant owners, those who really contribute significantly to the taxpayer base, the sale tax base, they have been already shut down, and they couldn't survive, sustain. And all the money which came from the state, they have not used all the money for the benefits of the small business owners. They only give to their selective people. I know who is getting the money. People are talking to me that they are applying to get the money, but it is not all the business, those who stay open, and especially the minority businesses are at stake. Because what is happening right now at the national, state, and city and county level, all the minority businesses are hurting so badly. And I know, being the small business owners, I know what it means to not have the money to pay your payroll tax. I know how hard it is to deal with the IRS when they keep sending you letter after letter after letter to ask for their money which you don't have. So it is going to be very, very difficult, and I will be the person, we do need to have a city council which is more inclusive and more representative of the population of the District Two or this Concord population. So I will work with each and every small business owners. I'll bring everybody together if I'm elected, and I will listen to them, and then I'll check out the plan, where we need to go, and the priority wise, what need to go first, what need to go second. Concord Naval Weapons Station, we have been talking about it for 25 years. Nothing has happened. And Front City Council spent $14 million giving to their own consultant, the people they know, $14 million as legal fee to educate them, to provide them the legal, what kind of legal fee they are, what kind of information they are providing them. I know there are some fee they have to pay to the state and federal government to do some of the work, but $14 million of taxpayers' money, they are just, they don't care about the small people. They just care about the big people, those who, it's intellectual welfare, and they are playing with it.
Thank you. Hope, there are a couple of measures on the ballot coming up. One, Measure Q. Do you think that would hurt or help Concord? And there's another one, Prop 15, that talks about taxing large businesses. Where do you stand on those?
So I am not supportive of the Measure Q, Measure B on the ballot. It's doubling the Measure Q tax. The council tried to make it seem like it was just extending the Measure Q tax. Because of the pandemic, I would have supported extending it, but doubling it is regressive, and it hurts the people who can least afford it the most. So the people who don't have a lot of money are essential workers, and their families, whose a lot of their jobs are the ones that went away, the retail jobs, the stores that can't open. And that's going to be a problem, because those people are the ones that go out and spend the money when they get it. They don't just save it, they have to spend it. One of the problems that's going to come up for the council right away is that the $27 million estimate that they're providing to the public is from 2018. Now, that's from when we were having a relatively robust economy, and that's not the case anymore. So it is somewhat deceptive. And as I mentioned in the beginning, that means that we're going to have to make do with a lot of what we have already. I do support Prop 15. I'm going to give the people in District Two an example of that. The, where longs used to be across from North Concord Bart, when CVS got in there, they didn't have to pay their full fair share of taxes because they were grandfathered in with longs. And so why should the burden be on the people and the most vulnerable economies? We need to start setting the standard and have the political will to demonstrate that people and businesses with money also need to contribute to the well-being of our community. We have this idea in Concord, it's shifted a lot on the council for the wealthy and the privileged, and it's become the idea that that's the center. And that's not the center. And we need to make sure that our Black and Brown and Indigenous and LGBTQ communities are part of the discussion. And that doesn't happen a lot. District Two and District Three get left out. And because we have a lot of businesses here, that Prop 15 will make a big difference. I don't know how quickly that will come in, so we will have to look for other funding. The funding that our current representative is referring to is from the state. It's not something that Concord came up with. So we need to make sure that we look for as much funding as possible to help small businesses. Also, we just need to make sure that they know that they may need to incorporate. Our small businesses were reluctant in 2016 to incorporate some of the technology and Amazon style business. And I urged them to try to do that in some way, although the other members did not. And now we can see that that's something that would really make a big difference for them now. So that's my question.
Thank you. Carlin, you're taking a few shots here. Go ahead.
I'm sorry. What is the, what is your question specifically, Bob?
Well, it's certainly about Measure Q and Prop 15, but you just heard that Ms. Johnson mentioned the fact that the council is not being truthful about how Measure Q would affect the city.
Sure. So I want to share with you, I served as mayor last year, and before that, I served as vice mayor. And in 2018, this came up. And I was one of the council members who did not vote to place a sales tax measure on the ballot, because I felt that we had not educated the public about why we were in the need for additional revenue, especially whenever the economy was doing so well. And so when I served as mayor last year in 2019, I insisted that we hold budget town halls in every district, as well as a budget town hall for Concord businesses. And I attended all of those events, because I wanted to make sure that the public fully understood what our economic situation was. And I wanted to hear from the public as to how they wanted us to address our budget challenges. And so the feedback that we received was that the city was looking for us, for the people of Concord, were looking for us to utilize new technology to be more efficient with some delivery of service. They were also looking for us to make cuts where it made sense. And also, they were open to an increase in sales tax revenue. And so I felt confident this past summer in placing this ballot measure on the ballot, because I had heard from the community and had taken the time to personally educate folks about our situation. And what I will share with you is, the city council understands that there are some critical needs in this community that should Measure B pass, we would be able to fund. And so one example is, I hear from Concordians all the time that, in particular, District Two, East Street is not in great condition. We have been able to improve and reclimate 16 roads in District Two, but East Street isn't on the list until next year. And so if Measure V were passed, you know, right now for the whole city, all we have is $6 million for our infrastructure improvements. We really need about $26 million just to keep things where they are. So we, the council has made a commitment, should Measure V pass, for us to allocate that funding toward roadwork. And one other area that has become critically important is addressing some of the challenges that we have related to behavioral health. And so the city council on Tuesday night is going to be talking about creating our own full-time core team member who goes out and works with the unsheltered to try to bring them into services, as well as standing up our own team for the city of Concord that would have a community impact team police officer, as well as a mental health professional from the county. And so one of the proposals is, should the council approve that approach, we could look, potentially, if Measure V passes, to help fund those critical services. So, thank you.
Thank you. Paul, what do you think about both of those measures?
Well, and definitely for Measure V, I think we need to bridge the $14 million budget deficit that the city has, and also provide for the infrastructure for our roads that Carlin mentioned. And as far as Prop 15, the tax on large businesses, I would be against that. I think we need to do everything we can to attract businesses, both small and large, to Concord. The more businesses we attract here in developing the Naval Weapons Station to include large and small businesses, will attract more citizens and also help bridge that budget deficit that we have. With more citizens here and more business here, Concord will thrive.
Tristan, same question?
Yes. Well, actually, I agree with Measure V. What I particularly like about that is that the, we get to control the money at the local level. It won't be taking part of it from the state. A Measure Q, I'm in favor of as well. Not, I wish we weren't in a situation we had to have Measure Q, but we are, so I am in favor of it. I am not in favor of Prop 15. It's a misconception to think. There are a lot of people that are of minority that own small businesses and buildings. I think it would affect a lot of those people, especially on our Monument Corridor. I also think that we do need to attract business to the city of Concord. And the state of California, it's no secret, people are leaving in droves. And I think we should make Concord a more welcoming place for businesses. Commercial properties are a fundamental need, and too retroactive for their property types, I'm not in favor of it.
One of the biggest issues facing every city is the number of unhoused individuals living within the city. Harmeesh, what would be your solution? You mentioned this earlier about the homeless. What would you do to try to get these people into housing and get them off the streets?
Sure. I think yesterday I was talking to the police chief with our candidates. And what we were talking about, even from the last community forum, the city and the county and the police chief was involved in a few weeks ago, he was saying that 17% of the calls come for, to deal with homelessness and mental health issues. So my solution would be, because I'm, all the candidates have no experience in that, except me. I have provided residential care facility for chronically mentally disabled, as well as for seniors with dementia for the last 25 years. And 28 years, I started the nonprofit to serve the underserved mental health patients in Concord. So what I was suggesting at that time, and what I think we could do, is that city of Concord spend more than a million dollar on the police department every day, even though we do need safety. But safety has many facets. Safety is not only dealing with people by force. Safety is also dealing with people with love. And what I am suggesting, that 17 to 20% of the city budget, and we could get some funding from Mayor Q, we could get some funding from the county regarding their behavioral health services budget, and we could put, they were saying there are 160 homeless individuals in the city of Concord, and I could house all those 160 patients, we'll provide them mental health services, we'll provide them drug rehab services, we'll provide them the housing they need, stability they need. And we need to treat them like human beings. And our leaders are talking about herd mentality, like treating all human beings like animals, that they are talking about herd. We are not animals. Human beings are not animals. We are human beings. So we need to treat people with respect, with dignity. And most of our seniors are becoming homeless in Concord. They are living in their cars. I know them. They talk to me. So what we need to do is take that 20% of the budget and put these 160 people in various homes. Some people say, oh, not in my backyard, not in my backyard, my property values are going to be going down. I started this program many, many years ago with John Allen, who was the director of a mental health program in Central County, which provided boarding care home. Neighbors came, and we did the open house. We introduced the patient to the neighbors, and patients knew neighbor, neighbor knew patient. So they were able to live together. So we need to have an outreach program which is based on love and community needs, not based on the economic or the profit margin people want to talk about. So I have the plan, and we could do much better job. I also work in the prison. I see hope when people come from prison, and there is no safety net for them. Nobody want to rent them a place to stay. No, county, they have this probation officer. If they are not able to come to the probation officer on time, they don't have the transportation, they don't have the phone, and then the probation officer, oh, they missed the appointment, they put them back into the prison. And I have seen so many people like that. We need to have a cohesive program, and I could provide that.
Thank you, Dr. Kumar. Paul, on the homeless?
Hi. I think we definitely need to come up with a solution for affordable, permanent housing for the homeless. I think we need to invest in both high and low housing. So if we create luxury housing with some of the land that we have available, we should also create affordable, permanent housing for the homeless. I'm not for shipping them out or encampments. I think that the encampments are temporary and unsafe. We need affordable, permanent housing, and we need to make sure that whenever we build something new for the community, there's money that goes towards affordable housing so that we have permanent solutions for them.
Thank you. Carlin?
Thank you.
Is there room in Concord to build this kind of housing, like perhaps maybe on the Weapons Station land?
Well, I am happy to speak to the Naval Weapons Station, and then I'll also speak to what we're doing in Concord as well. And just to remind people, Concord is one of only two cities in all of Contra Costa's 19 cities that has a full-service homeless shelter. And that is not open right now, but all of those who were sheltered at the shelter are living in some of our hotels here in the city of Concord. And I do want to share with you that when I was serving as vice mayor in 2018, we declared a shelter emergency here so that we could receive a special pot of funding from the state. It's called HEETS funding. And that funding has been used while the shelter has been closed right now to help create, to renovate the space in a way that is friendly to the unsheltered. So the renovations were made with input from some of the clients that utilize the shelter. What do I mean by that? What I mean is, whenever I have met with unsheltered individuals, and I've gone out and met with folks who are living in shelter, in tents, in encampments, I also, when I serve I also, when I served as mayor, I had, uh, homeless individuals make appointments with me during my mayor's office hours. Uh, and so what we heard was there needs to be a friendly space for people to wait to charge their cell phones. There needs to be a safe space to store their goods and their items so that people don't steal from them. There needs to be a place for kennels for their dogs. Uh, there needs to be easy access from outside so that people don't have to walk all the way through the shelter to use the restroom. And so I just received word last week that those improvements had been completed and will be ready whenever the shelter is reopened. Uh, and I do want to share in terms of at the Naval Weapons Station, we do have a legally binding agreement with homeless service providers. And that agreement is blessed by the Navy and the Department of Housing and Urban Development, HUD. And so at the Naval Weapons Station, we are going to have to provide four sites with utilities and infrastructure that, that it, it comes to a total of sixteen acres, uh, for the building of a hundred and thirty to two hundred and sixty housing units for the homeless. Uh, so that's something that's planned in the future, but what about right now? And so what I would like to share is again, you know, how we're looking at the core team approach on Tuesday night, funding a full-time core officer, and that program can have success. One of the people who met with me when I was, uh, serving as mayor, uh, let me know that they had received a housing voucher for Section Eight. But we know that it's difficult to utilize Section Eight vouchers. And that person told me that repeatedly Core had gone out to find them, uh, even when they had missed appointments and, uh, because, you know, they, they had lost track of time. And the core team helped this person get their Section Eight voucher. And then we worked together to extend the time period for that person. And I'm very thrilled to say that since February, that person has been sheltered. And that was the work of the core team. But there is a lot of work that remains to be done. Uh, but I would like for us to take a look at those who I've met whenever I've gone out and met with the unsheltered, Danny, Terry, Milo, Robert, you know, just to name a few. And, and hopefully with, uh, the core having a, uh, full-time core person, we can work with those folks, just like we did with this other individual, to get them full-time housing and permanent supports. Thank you.
Piper.
Yes, um, I actually was a nonprofit president, uh, for quite a few years and did a lot actually to help with, uh, uh, families at risk. Um, actually through BWA as well, and then our nonprofit merged with Stan. I, when I was on the Concord Community Services Commission, I did, uh, uh, tour the homeless shelter off Arnold. I'm a huge supporter of helping the homeless, but there's one issue that's not addressed often, um, is we have a lot of people that, um, fall through those cracks as far as being, uh, schizophrenic and bipolar and having drug issues. And they are not able to go to the homeless shelters. They are turned away. They, they, they are not allowed to go in under those circumstances. And that's really where we probably need to revisit Prop forty-seven. But we really need to have opportunities for those individuals, if we want what's best, to be able to have drug, mandatory drug rehab programs or some sort of way that we can make sure they get the attention they need. So we have safety for all our citizens. Because there are families and people that, that want, uh, to, uh, have the services that we provide in the shelters. And there are those that do not. I happen to work in Oakland. A perfect example is that Twenty-seventh and Telegraph. There is a fantastic, uh, homeless, uh, facility there where they bring in the showers. And, but there is a large group of people that I think fall into the practice of, uh, mental illness with drug addiction that do not seek those services and they still are in the community. And there, I, there are people that can be quite violent in those circumstances. And we need to, as we're looking to address homeless issues, we need to focus on that as well. Because all of our citizens should feel, uh, safe in their environments. Everyone should have a home. But if someone chooses not to take advantage of some of those services and is threatening our citizens, we need to address that as well.
One of the big issues around the country right now is the issue of policing. Uh, police departments generally take up the majority of a city's budget. Uh, we've heard about these calls to defund the police, which is not exactly, exactly defunding the police. It's redirecting some of the funding. Carlin, what more could be done with some of the police department budget, to make this work better for the community?
Sure. Thank you for the question. So I have, uh, we've been part, uh, holding a number of community conversations over the summer. Uh, and the city council all participated back on June sixth. There was a peaceful protest until the center told at that time by the organizers for us to listen to what was being said. And so we have, so we held then a, uh, a council study session on policing back on July fifteenth. Uh, and then a community town hall on mental health and homelessness that was held on August twelfth. Uh, most of the city council also participated in a countywide meeting on September third. It was open to the public, uh, to learn about a new program that was being developed at the county level to have a twenty-four-seven, uh, response unit available to address mental health calls for service and how the city of Concord can help support such a program. I've also spoken, uh, with law enforcement and, uh, you know, the perspective that's been shared is that law enforcement has been asked to, uh, become the default responder for incidents of all kinds and delegating, uh, many of these responsibilities, um, to unarmed social workers and other behavioral health specialists is something that would be universally welcome. Um, so that's why, like I mentioned earlier, on September twenty-second, this coming Tuesday, the city council is taking community input. And, uh, again, we are going to look at how we can stand up a full-time, uh, core team for the city of Concord. Right now, we are partnering with the city of Walnut Creek for twenty hours a week. But we feel that the need is so great, uh, that we should have, uh, someone who is focused specifically on Concord, as well as setting up, uh, a mental health team, as I mentioned earlier, that includes a community impact team-trained police officer, as well as a mental health specialist from the county, uh, to go out and, uh, address behavioral health issues, uh, throughout the county. So we're looking at how we can reimagine policing. And I do want to share with people something, you know, Concord has grown considerably since nineteen ninety-three. Yet many people do not know that we have the same number of police officers right now in twenty-twenty as we did in nineteen ninety-three. And so, uh, we do need to take a look at, um, you know, any additional cuts that we start to make, uh, would actually involve cutting, uh, police officer positions. And that would in turn impact, uh, response times. So right now, we are under, uh, for priority one calls, emergency calls, we're under the national average. Uh, and we want to make sure that we stay that way because Concordians do want someone to be there to address their nine-one-one calls when they have an emergency.
Hope, uh, same question regarding the policing and I, and the homeless issue too. Because what happens a lot of time when police are called, somebody, uh, say is having a, a mental issue, um, and the police is the, is the default agency to respond. Would the defunding or redirecting some of that funding solve that problem?
Absolutely. Um, this is something that I have been advocating at city council meetings for, for many, many years. Um, do not be fooled. Measure Q has been around for many years. This is not a new tax measure. And the current council has done nothing with it to help, uh, reduce the idea that homelessness will be solved by criminalizing the behaviors. And they were only just now addressing it because it is come to light in a crisis situation with a lot of protests. So the Concord Police Department takes up almost sixty percent of Concord's budget. That's quite a bit compared to other cities. Um, we don't have statistics that, um, I, when I, when we met with the police chief yesterday, I asked, do we have statistics about outcomes? And the Concord PD really doesn't. He says you have to go back and hand, go through them. Um, but with technology, we should be able to see what kinds of, uh, of other social services take some of the police funding that goes to police responding to, uh, those sorts of calls, the homeless, mental health calls, the drug addiction calls, and see if there are social services and existing places in the community that can, you know, existing, uh, nonprofits that can go out and help. So, um, Measure Q also, I want to just throw out there that it's not going to be funding this core service that when, the last time we passed it, council allowed it to pay for their unfunded pension costs. So if they were to shore that up again and not allow it to be used for that and to make provisions for it to be used for the homeless, I would be more supportive of it. Um, defund the police does not mean to take away from the safety of the community. It is about equitable public safety. Not everything is criminalized. And the council has had the past four years to make those adjustments, but they have not. And you can see from the idea that our calls have not been changed, the response time, it, we can't set policy on the homeless, uh, by, uh, having it be, um, fear factor. And when, whenever the, uh, council gets an opportunity for extra funding, they tend to use it for police. They added, uh, you know, a substation in Toto Santos for quality of life issues. And that's not the way to handle this. And the current, uh, extra awareness of it is not sufficient. You need somebody who has had that as a policy, uh, to be able to have, to show they have the political willpower. And that is what I would do. I've come before the council, I've said, you are, uh, having everything be based on the police action. But there are better ways because when you criminalize homelessness, all you do is they get arrested and they come back. They get arrested and they come back. Nobody is addressing what's causing them to be in the, uh, situation that they're in. And another thing I would like to add is another thing I've advocated for is it's very difficult for people to get to the homeless shelter. It's out of the way by my house. Um, I do not mind that it's by my house, but I will tell you, as somebody who walks around all the time here, it is a dangerous area to walk in. It's where four and two forty-two and six eighty all converge. It's not, the bus only runs once an hour, if at all. And it is very difficult. And right now, one of the only ways for the homeless to get there is to call somebody and they don't even know if that, that volunteer will show up. And in the past, council has worked with the city of Walnut Creek, but Walnut Creek withdrew its funding to try to have somebody go out as sort of a core team member to work with the homeless. So we need some, and when they withdrew that, we need somebody to make sure that it's legislated in, that that money is not for criminalization, that it is for social.
Thank you, Hope. Paul.
Uh, yes, so as far as the police budget, uh, we had a chance to meet with the chief of police last night and kind of talk about the sixty million dollars. It's around sixty million dollars that we put towards the police department out of the city's budget per year. Um, and we talked about the number of, uh, sworn police officers, um, that there are for Concord, around a hundred and fifty-three of them. And if you do the math, a hundred and fifty-three sworn officers times around a hundred and twenty thousand dollars a year, it only comes out to twenty million dollars. And we were told that the, the, the staff is eighty-four percent of the budget. So the numbers really do not add up. I, I think we definitely need to audit the police budget and what we're spending, uh, sixty million dollars a year on. The citizens of Concord deserve to know what that money is being spent on. Um, and we need a breakdown of where it's going because, um, as Hope mentioned, um, is it being spent wisely? You know, do, do we keep putting money towards the police, um, and why? So I wouldn't be for, uh, defunding them at this point. I think we need more information. I think we need to know where that money is going, how it's being spent, and make sure that it's being spent responsibly.
Thank you. Tristan.
Yes, um, I actually was in the, uh, the Zoom meeting with the chief of police as well. And I would just like to correct one thing. He said he would love to be able to track more efficiently. Um, but that sort of system would cost roughly about five million dollars for us to install. So with our budget right now, that wouldn't be the software that we could do, which is why they're doing it manually to get some of the statistics to us. Um, we have a police chief that is from Stanford, uh, you know, uh, has a great reputation, has been part of San Jose's police force, which is really the creme de la creme, some cities would argue. And he's in place now and I have confidence, um, that he's aware of our budget issues and he's looking at those things. Um, I had an opportunity to do a ride-along, which I would encourage everyone to do that's seeking office, and to see exactly what that's like for two hours on a police ride and talk a little bit about morale. And the, the police chief is doing a great job of making our police officers, uh, feel appreciated. This is a very difficult time to be a police officer. And I think that we're in a, a good position to have someone give us a reasonable audit and assessment of what's going on with the police station. So I, I, I feel strongly we have a good police chief.
Thank you. Dr. Kumar, the same question regarding the homelessness and the police, uh, department and the budget.
I think the, uh, the brand system is, uh, the system based on the suppression of the, uh, minorities. And there is an institutionalized, uh, and implicit bias in the system against those who start asking question. We know when our children ask us as parents something and how defensive we become. This is in the nature of the human being. And when we're using force to suppress people, to, to, uh, treat them like animal, like herd, without dignity, without respect. And I, I do agree that the chief was saying that it is going to cost money to, uh, put the programs off, the program. But now, based on what I have been able to see and do, uh, I didn't have a single penny when I started my nonprofit. It came from somewhere. You have to have a good idea. You have to have a creative, innovative idea. And money comes when people see the real world. And, and the same with the police department. They are not helping, uh, these homeless individuals or the families, people with mental illness. Police is not helping them. They are not trained as, as mental health professionals. They are not trained as social workers. We don't need a police. We need a, a real human being to treat them with, with love, with respect, with, and that identification be. There is a, uh, 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 defense mechanism we talked about in mental health. It's called identification with the aggressor. And we see coming from the White House that we are law and order, a country. And we see how much law and order we have in the country. Every, every state, every city in, uh, in our surrounding is, uh, uh, filling all their street with homeless population. And our state hasn't funded the mental health services. They pay pennies, uh, to a, a PSD, a mental health professional, and they pay hundred and fifty thousand dollar to the bar driver. So we need to see the priorities, where our priorities are. Our priorities are not to create wisdom in the community, our priorities to, to create disinformation, misinformation, mislead the people, especially the minority communities. And I have seen in mental health field, when they do these intelligent testing on minorities. These tests were not standardized on minority population hundred years ago. Dr. Anastasi, who wrote the book on psychological testing, wrote hundred years ago, hundred and fifteen year ago, that these tests are not valid on minority population. We still use the same test. An Afro-American child, uh, running on the street of Richmond is, is, uh, diagnosed with low IQ because these tests doesn't measure what he's up to. They are more smarter than, than kids living in the, uh, uh, palaces. But, but the, the system doesn't create that. So we need to have a, somebody, and I have that specialization, we need to treat people with respect.
Thanks to Dr. Kumar. That's all the time we have. Thank you to our candidates for answering these very important questions. Each now has two minutes to make a closing statement. We'll talk, start with Paul Wood.
Thank you. I just want to say thank you to the citizens of Concord and District Two for considering me to be your candidate for city council. I'm excited to represent your voice and to listen to you and to be the change that you want to see. So in Concord, thirty percent of our population is Latino. And I want to represent your voice. Uh, my spouse is Latino and, uh, we speak Spanish in my home. And, uh, I definitely want to be the voice for those that are underrepresented, um, that don't feel safe, that don't feel heard. I think we need more diversity in Concord. We need more progress. Uh, we need a new master developer for the Naval Weapons Station. We need to really land that, and do it right this time. The current city council had the opportunity with the Naval Weapons Station development and picked the wrong master developer, uh, for the project. Um, and now's our time to pick the right one and create affordable housing, create luxury housing, create green space, um, and to really improve our schools so that land can be used, uh, to really bring. create green space, um, and to really improve our schools so that land can be used uh to really bring Concord into the future. And I want to say thank you to the um citizens of Concord and District Two for giving me that chance um to be your voice, to represent you, and to create the change and progress that we need here in the city.
Thank you, Paul. Thank you. Tristan Piper.
Yes, hi. I've been a resident of District Two for thirty-one years, as I mentioned, raising our three children in our home in District Two. My children are now raising their children in their homes in District Two. And I strongly believe the uh economic equalizer for all people is one of the most important things, economic opportunity. You achieve that by having an excellent uh school. You achieve that by having a safe environment to walk to school and have businesses feel free and safe to be here. And that really is funded by a well-funded police force. You have to feel safe where you live. I'm a self-funded candidate. Um, uh, individual donations are fine, but I've chosen not to do that because of COVID nineteen. I strongly feel that special interest groups have been too involved with District Two and the city of Concord. I would encourage everyone to go to uh the Force Sixty. So you're going to put the candidate's name in that you're looking at, so we'll use our incumbent, Carol Ovemeyer, and you're going to put four sixty. And when you look at that, you're going to see how many pages there might be and if your representative is really representing yourself or a special interest group. It really is in District Two's interests for District Two to be represented. The garbage company is wonderful, but we don't need to be getting donations from the garbage company. We don't need to. So I look forward to the opportunity of representing families and neighbors and businesses in District Two authentically. And I promise I will not be taking money from special interest groups. Thank you.
Thank you, Tristan. Hope Johnson.
Yes, thank you um uh to the Elections Department and the League of Women Voters for holding this forum and to the uh residents and voters in District Two for considering me for um Concord City Council. I'm going to ask you, are you better off now than you were four years ago? Uh, you've all seen me down at city council advocating for uh better budgeting allocation for the cleanup of uh the Concord Naval Weapons Station. I I was right there telling them, you, Lennar is not a trustworthy developer, and uh they did it anyway. And I had proof of all of those things. We even have it over at InfoLeo. So um, the Concord Naval Weapons Station, my main focus from the beginning will be the toxic cleanup. I have experience with um dealing with the toxic cleanup over in San Francisco. And there's another toxic uh substance that's been found. So the Naval Weapons Station cleanup is going to be the very first thing that we have to deal with. It'll be quite some time before any building goes on there, at least a year um before any building goes on. Uh, District Two has been underrepresented. I grew up here. I live in the house where I grew up now. And uh, District Two has not been represented well by um the city council. They refuse to put people from our, from the west side of Willow Pass Road. And I would like to advocate that we do that, that we have more diversity on the boards, and that includes some Latino people. Uh, and uh, we have, one-third of our population is Latino. So I would like to say that I have been a voice at city council. And I would like to have more opportunity to bring a progressive conversation. You can see that that all of the things I've advocated for in the past are now something that the council is trying to put forward. But I've been there and I've had these ideas for years, and I'd like the opportunity to uh have a real vote on them. Thank you. And please go to Hope Johnson.
Thank you very much. Harmesh.
Yeah. Yeah, most of you heard that uh um I I have been running for uh Concord City Council for quite some time. And why the special interest group, including the police union, including the current establishment, don't want somebody like me to be on the city council? Do you know why they don't want somebody who is educated, who is aware of the issues, who is, who want to help the community and not the special groups? That's why they don't want me to be there on the city council. But with my grit, with my uh determination, I'm continuing, and I will continue to fight for the people. When I landed in Concord twenty-eight year ago, I started my community service the very first day. Even three years I worked in St. Mary's Hospital in San Francisco, full-time on volunteer basis to complete my hours and without single penny of pay from them. So so you need to have a desire to help people, and I have a track record. Not only I'm a a clinical neuropsychologist, I'm also a small business owner. I'm also a father. I know, I also have a wife, single wife for thirty-two years. I know how to live with two strong women, and 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 then I need to shut up, and I do shut up. Uh, the, so we need to really uh have somebody who knows uh the issues, who have the experience and who know the uh skill set and being, I have seen poverty, I have seen discrimination. I have seen how red tape hinders your progress in the city of Concord. I have seen it firsthand. I I know how to develop business. I know how to develop residential care facilities from zero onwards. So I am the kind of candidate uh the city uh uh of Concord needs, and we need diversity. I will put uh diverse community members on board and commissions. We don't have many uh people on board of this. I'm the one who will fight for uh to remove red tape for small businesses. I'm the candidate who will uh uh fight for the social services. I know how to develop those programs and provide those services. So I would appreciate all the uh resident of District Two to please come and support me so that we could bring the change we are looking for. My website is drkumarforthecommunity.com. Thank you.
Thank you, Harmesh. Carlin.
Thank you again to those who organized this forum this morning and to Mr. Butler for facilitating our forum. My name is Carlin Obringer, and I will say again, I am proud to serve the people of District Two on the Concord City Council. When it comes to the Naval Weapons Station, I want to remind folks, I was not on the council when Lennar was chosen. However, I was the council member who led the charge against a master developer that, again, I did not choose, who refused to keep its commitments to the people of District Two regarding traffic mitigation, open space, employing working men and women to build the project right in our community, as well as job creation. And I do want to share with folks that I've led the charge to ensure a safe cleanup at the Naval Weapons Station. In fact, because of me, there was an October thirtieth, twenty eighteen meeting where we had representatives from the Navy and other entities responsible for cleanup come before the city council and ask our questions about cleanup and mitigation. And I do want to share that I am proud to have wide-ranging community support, including over two hundred contributions averaging seventy-eight dollars a person from you and your friends and neighbors who are my special interests. And I believe that it's so critical to be accessible to Concordians, to you and our neighbors. And that's why, as mayor, I met with over four hundred Concordians during my monthly coffee or beer with the mayor and Friday meetings with the mayor as well. I also worked to build a greater sense of community, launching our first September of service. With we, we had over two hundred volunteers participating in that inaugural community event, including cleanup of the creek and park at Hillcrest. I've gotten crosswalks installed in North Concord, including two in front of schools to ensure safety for children in non-COVID times. I'm the person that Concordians call, message, or text when they need help or want something done. And you're not going to find a bigger booster for Concord within or without our community. So those who know me know I, my words, I get things done. And I ask for your vote on November third. Please visit carlinobringer.com.
This concludes our forum for the candidates running for the Concord City Council, District Two on November third. Once again, our candidates are Harmesh Kumar, Carlin Obringer, Paul Wood, Tristan Piper, and Hope Johnson. For more information on the candidates, visit www.votersedge.org. The Elections Division has set up a multiple, has set up multiple drop boxes for your ballots around the county. For the one nearest to you, please visit www.cocovote.us or call the office at nine two five three three five seven eight hundred. Thank you for watching, and don't forget to vote by November third. The deadline to register in this election is October nineteenth. I'm Bud Butler. Thank you for watching.